Thank you, Chair Cullen.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. This is a public hearing of the Zoning Board of Appeals. My name is Chair Violetta Cullen. The zoning ordinance empowers us to hear references from the city council, petitions from other parties on special uses, and variances and appeals from the zoning administrator. We hear testimony from those in attendance and then make formal findings of fact based on the evidence presented, which consists of testimony exhibits in our knowledge of the community. We will then either make a decision within this body or a recommendation to the city council. Testimony is taken under oath. Although we do not apply the strict rules of evidence and procedure, we ask that you keep your testimony relevant as it relates to the standards contained in the zoning ordinance. When you testify, please state your name and address so we can contact you if necessary, and please keep your testimony to five minutes or less. Each case will be introduced by staff and a list of supporting documents will be read into the record. Then the applicant or their representative will give an explanation of the proposal. After that, anyone who wishes to testify as a proponent or opponent of the case may do so, and the applicant will have a chance to respond. Katie, please call the roll. You're muted.
Chair Cullen?
Here.
Member Miranchov?
Yeah.
Member Zordon?
Yeah.
Member Pucktall? Absent. Member Deacon?
Yeah.
Member Aravalo? Marked absent. We do have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. I don't know if we have anybody here that will testify to this case, but if we do, please raise your left hand. Do you promise to tell the truth and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
Chair Cullen, can we have a motion to suspend the rolls?
Yes. Who would like to make a motion to suspend the rolls? I'll make it. Motion to suspend the rolls. Can I get a second?
I can't.
All in favor?
I have to call the votes and roll call because we're recording.
Okay.
Online, sorry. So Chair Cullen?
Yes.
Member Miranchov?
Yes.
Member Zordon?
Yes.
Member Pucktall? A member Deacon?
Hi.
And member Aravalo. So 4-0, motion carries. I think we have some draft minutes to cover before we do the hearing.
I think we had some minutes from two different meetings.
Yes.
Right.
It's one of the minute, one of the draft minutes, the motion failed because there were two people that abstained because they weren't present at that meeting. We just had a crossover. Okay.
So can we have a motion to approve the meeting minutes for June 15, 2021?
I'll move to approve the meeting minutes from June 15, 2021, as included in our packet.
Second.
All right. Chair Cullen?
Yes.
Member Miranchov?
Yes.
Member Zordon?
Yes.
Member Pucktall? Member Deacon?
Abstain.
Member Aravalo? All right, motion does carry with one abstention.
Can I get a motion to approve the meeting minutes of October 19, 2021?
I'm to approve the meeting minutes from October 19, 2021, included in our packets.
Second.
Okay. Chair Cullen?
Hi.
Member Miranchov?
Yes.
Member Zordon?
Yes.
Member Pucktall? Absent. A member Deacon?
Abstain.
And member Aravalo is absent. So motion does carry again for you want with one obsession or one abstention.
Moving on to new business, is the respondent for Mohammed Ali here at the meeting?
Let me see.
President.
Present.
Yes.
Oh, thank you. Katie, would you like to read this into the record?
Sure. Mohammed Ali, let's see, request a special use permit for a convenience store to sell newspapers, magazines, medicine, food, beverages, and tobacco in the D4 Downtown Transition District under zoning code section 6-11-5-3. The Zoning Board of Appeals makes a recommendation to the city council, the determinate body for this case in accordance with section 6-3-5-8 of Evanston zoning code in relation to the property located at 518 Davis Street, zoning case 21ZMJV-0091.
So the respondent, would you please introduce yourself?
You may go ahead and introduce the swearing in of him now because we kind of skipped that.
Okay. Let me swear you in. If you could raise your left hand, do you swear to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you. Could you introduce yourself, name and address?
Yeah, my name's Mohammed Ali. I live in Chicago, 4950 North Kentucky Avenue. And I want to open a convenience store on downtown Evanston on Davis. We will be selling newspapers, magazines, medicine, food, beverages, and tobacco. And basically, it's going to be like a 7-Eleven. I feel like there's a need in the area for one, for students and the people that live around the community. And that's basically it.
Thank you, sir. Questions for this guy? I'll start it off. What are your hours, what are you planning for your hours to be, sir?
Hours of operation will be 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m.
And you said you would be selling tobacco?
Yes.
What's the percentage of your tobacco sales?
Tobacco sales will be approximately 20%.
20%?
20.
Oh, okay, thank you. Other questions for him?
Sure, I'll jump in. Mr. Ali, have you run a similar type operation before in Evanston or other locations?
Yeah, yeah.
Can you tell us a little bit about that?
I first started as a manager in Spokee. I was the manager there for approximately four years. I ran like a candy shop where we sold all types of candy, lot of candy, Japanese candy. And I was managing that store for approximately four years. And then I worked in Evanston, the location on Dempster and Dodge, the unit store there where I'm working currently. And we're just looking to expand the business.
Fantastic, thank you. And it sounds like when you went before DAPR, they made the recommendation that you move the cashier to the front of the store. Is that, has that change been been made according to the plans that you presented this evening?
Yes.
Okay. And can you share, can you share with us where you expect deliveries to be made and what that looks like?
The deliveries will be made through the back of the of the business. Back of the store, the door from the alley, park in the alley. You can deliver from there.
Okay. And I know there was some question at DAPR about, you know, sort of the storefront windows. How do you anticipate treating the storefront windows as it relates to any signage or display of product?
Basically, the front, like the windows will be, there won't be no signs, will be just clear. But everything, nothing will be, maybe there will be a sign for like a convenience store on the bottom, but maybe that will cover 10% of the glass. But on the outside looking in, you could see everything through the glass. Nothing will be covering the glass in the front.
Got it. And I have a question for staff. It sounds like, I know there was one letter of opposition in our packet, and Melissa, thank you, you sent around another letter. Do we have more detail or any other letters of opposition that have been presented to this project or anything specific that Mr. Ali can respond to?
With staff, there's going to be two employees, each of whom will work.
Got it. Thank you, Mr. Ali. And then I had a question for the Evanston staff, either Katie or Melissa. Oh, that's okay. I was noting that there was two letters of opposition that was presented to the project, and I just wanted to know from staff if there was any more detail about the nature of that opposition that they could speak to.
So we did not receive any additional letters beyond what you, the latest that you received this afternoon. And we did not receive any phone calls, so I personally did not speak with anyone over the phone to kind of get additional context. So what was submitted in writing is the extent of what we know with why they are opposing this use.
I would agree with Katie and note that I did see a member of the public earlier who was one of the the comments that signed up. So we probably have public comment that can give more info.
Okay, got it. Thank you. Members Zordon, were you wanting to speak or were you just acknowledging someone in the public?
No, I wasn't. I'm patiently waiting my turn to speak.
Okay.
Please, I'll take your turn, Jill.
Let me take my hand down. So Mr. Ali, can you confirm that the floor plan that I believe is on the share screen now that's included in our packet is is the current intended layout for your shop?
Yes.
Okay, with the cashier desk at the front.
Yes.
And could we talk a little bit, you mentioned yourself and I believe one additional member. Can you talk a little bit about parking availability for you and your staff member?
There's a, there's a parking garage over there. And also, they can park on on the on Davis. Early in the morning, usually, usually there's a lot of parking like like at 9:00. So parking won't be an issue for staff. They easily find park around Davis or in the parking garage.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Ali. There is one person on the meeting that would like to speak to, speak about this project. I think her name is Bonnie Wilson. Ms. Wilson, are you there?
Yes, I'm here. Do you want me to speak now?
Please, your name and address for the record and then speak.
I'm Bonnie Wilson. I live in the first ward. Can you hear me? Yes.
Yeah.
You also need to be sworn in, ma'am.
Oh, I do, okay.
Sorry, I didn't know she wasn't. Could you please raise your left hand? You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Thank you.
I'm Bonnie Wilson. I live in the first ward in the 500 block of Grove. I want to speak against a special use permit for a new convenience store at 518 Davis Street. Here are the reasons why I'm against this convenience store. I drive down the alley a lot going to Davis Street, and as you know, Davis is a one-way street going west. However, it is still difficult to see cars coming west of Davis because cars are parked too close to the corner of the alley. I, I, when I go down Davis Street, there's a lot of cars already parked in the street. So I go at different times of the day and I've never seen, I've always seen cars parked on on Davis Street because there's a medical building across the street, I mean, next door. I feel strongly against a new convenience store being approved on the corner of Davis and the South Alley west of Hinman. If the convenience store moves in, that would mean more congestion on the corner with delivery trucks, plus customers gathering in front of the store and going in and out of the store. The customers of the convenience store will more than likely park their cars in the alley to run into the store to buy an item, which again will cause more congestion in the alley. This part of Davis is very close to residential area and the Mather Senior Home. This store will cause more noise on the block where now there is only a few restaurants and and a medical building, which is now a very quiet area of Davis Street. Plus, there is already delivery trucks parking in the alley in the nearby, for the nearby restaurants. So this is not a place to open a convenience store. So I'm asking you to please vote no for a special use permit for a convenience store to sell newspapers, magazines, medicine, food, beverages, and tobacco in the D4 Downtown. I am sure it will be a very popular place to go shopping, but this is not the place to open a convenience store. And there is a reason why, there is a reason that this area has to have a special permit to put in a convenience store for at 518 Davis Street. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Is there anyone else here at this meeting that would like to speak to this proposal? Let's see, anyone else on here? Okay. Anyone else, Katie, that you know about that's on here that wants to speak to it? No. Let's close the record and do our deliberation.
Chair Cullen, do we want to give Mr. Ali a chance to respond to anything that we heard from Ms. Wilson before we close the record? Give him the opportunity.
Mr. Ali, do you have a response?
Yes. I'm like any other business, you know, there's a lot of restaurants, a lot of, there's actually a lot of vacant storefronts around that area. So I don't understand why parking would would be an issue because a lot of the customers will be walking, you know, from the school, from the people that working around the area, Whole Foods, and people from the neighborhood. I mean, if the cars can't find park, they will just keep on driving and then stop at the next closest store. So I would see that as a as a big issue.
Do you have anything that you would suggest that you could really do about people parking in that alley? Or right in front of your store?
I could put up a sign that says, no parking in the alley.
Katie, can we work with traffic on something like that?
We absolutely could. Um, I do, we can see if there's anything there currently. I know we're going to be preventing, he's already aware that he can't have any like stock type of delivery or pickup. Um, but we we can see what we can do because I know there is a fire hydrant immediately in front of his building. So if anybody were doing like a quick run-in, they obviously can't do it in front of the store. Um, I will chat with Public Works to see what they're able to do and if they can coordinate with him, but you can maybe note that as a condition on your recommendation. And then I can chat with Director Knighten as well and see if she has any suggestions.
Okay, thank you. We could include that as a position. I just want to know one more thing, Mr. Ali. Do you plan on keeping the front of the store clear from a lot of people standing around in garbage?
Yes.
That would be your responsibility as the person that's there. That's why the neighborhood is talking about this proposal.
Yes, I understand that. And I know, I know, uh, we have to keep the store clean and protect the environment. So we, we, I mean, it's our business, so we're going to take care of it like it's our house or, you know, property. And it'll be clean 100% of the time. That's part of the employee's jobs also.
Thank you. Okay, now to close the record so we can do our deliberation and move on to standards. Board, what, Carol, do you have anything to say about this proposal?
So here are my thoughts. I'm not so much concerned about parking because there are plenty of parking sites around. I'm more concerned about what the neighbor also said. There is a, there is a place in front of the store with the hydrant, and it is marked as no parking area. But there should be a sign, no standing. Because I, I think that most commonly over there, there'll be people that will stop on emergency lights. And this will obscure the visibility from people coming from the alley and taking the left turn on Davis Street. So you can see from the photo that there's already a sign over there, no parking, and there is a fire hydrant. So the fire hydrant may be something that people will consider and will not even stop and stand there for while purchasing something. But still, this has to be reinforced a little bit more seriously with additional sign, no emergency lights or something like that. This is my only concern. Otherwise, I don't see a difference as the applicant said between him, his type of business, and other types of businesses that may want to come to this place. Yeah, it's true, convenience stores are a little bit more frequently visited, but it is mostly visited by people on foot. So my concern is once again about standing cars on emergency lights in front of the store and preventing people coming from the alley to see clearly to the left.
Jill, Lisa?
I can, I can echo, you know, Carol's concerns and I can empathize with the points raised by Ms. Wilson. But that said, they, they, to me, don't outweigh the benefit of of undertaking the storefront and building it out to the specifications and to the conditions that were indicated by DAPR. So on balance, I would be comfortable moving forward with the plan.
Lisa?
I agree with those comments. I think, you know, Jill's points are exactly right. On balance, I think there is, you know, more benefit than any potential drawback. I'm not sure if we want to place the condition or I would look to staff's recommendation of how we would, you know, advise staff to work with Public Works to, you know, more fully, you know, the traffic engineers are going to come up with better solutions than we will. And so I really want to put it in their hands. I don't know if that's something that can happen before they go, you know, this goes to city council, but I think there can be some thoughtful consideration given, you know, its location, vis a vis that alley and the fire hydrant. So, you know, before we kind of propose a motion, if this is, if, you know, if that's the direction this is going, I would ask for staff's guidance on that.
We can certainly just pass that along and work on that internally. The last meeting in October where we also considered a convenience store, it was requested that staff study the parking on Dempster Street. And we were able to kind of develop a condition for them that still did require the app, put the burden on that applicant to handle his parking with his staff and with his customers. So ultimately, putting a condition of approval on an ordinance, but the burden's on the city, it's a little tricky. So, member Deacon, you'd be correct that we would have to just work on that internally, but it's in the record in the minute. So we'll absolutely talk with Public Works and Director Knighten and make sure we can figure out what signage we can, you know, work with the applicant to get in that alley.
We can make that a condition as well so that it stays in the front of mind.
Well, that's what I was trying to determine here. I'm not sure that it's appropriate as a condition. If we're talking about working with, you know, directing staff to work with Public Works, and it's really incumbent on the city to determine sort of, you know, what makes sense there from a traffic configuration in putting signage up in the public way. I don't think that's a condition on the applicant, in my view.
That would be correct. The condition would ultimately end up being addressed as it goes through to the city council's packet. Because when we did send forward your last condition where it was the city's obligation and the recommendation, it got, there was a question from Law Department about that. So we, we do need to, it's in the record on this meeting. And zoning administrator Clots is here to also be witness. So we'll definitely pass this along and make sure that it's addressed before it goes to the city council. But ultimately, yeah, the applicant can't put up city signs in the right of way. That would be Public Works.
Other than that, you know, Chair Cullen, I support the the project. You know, this is an experienced, you know, the, we have heard testimony that this gentleman has experienced in, you know, running businesses similar to this in other locations. This is a vacant storefront. While it's a quiet block, it's quiet because we do have, you know, several empty storefronts there. And I think we as a city need to be, you know, considering what businesses, you know, want to operate in this area and be supportive and, you know, friendly to business operations with the expectation that they meet, you know, what is needed as conditions upon, you know, put upon the approval.
And I agree with you too, Lisa. This is part of our comprehensive plan. Convenience store is in there. And you're right, it's better to have a business in there with an owner that's cognizant of how to run it rather than have an empty storefront. So I support this proposal as well. And with that, I am going to move on to the standards, the special use standards. For the ZBA to recommend that the city council grant a special use, the ZBA must find that the proposed special use, one, is one of the listed special uses for the zoning districts in which the property lies. This staff has determined that this standard has been met. Convenience store is a listed eligible special use within the D4 Downtown Transition District. If anybody disagrees, please chime in. Number two, complies with the purposes and the policies of the comprehensive general plan and the zoning ordinance. Staff has determined that this standard has been met. The use is compliant with the zoning ordinance and comprehensive general plan. The proposed use promotes the growth and development of a business and commercial area and strengthens Evanston's economic base. Number three, does not cause a negative cumulative effect in combination with the existing special use or as a category of land use. This standard has been met. The proposed use has limited potential to negatively interfere with any proximate residential or commercial uses. Number four, does not interfere with or diminish the value of property in the neighborhood. This standard has been met. The proposed use would occupy a currently vacant storefront and is non-objectible to surrounding commercial uses. Number five, is adequately served by public facilities and services. This standard has been met. The building is served by adequate sidewalks, streets with dedicated bike lanes, trash collection, on-street parking, and is near CTA bus services. Number six, does not cause undue traffic congestion. This standard has been met. The location is well-suited for customers to access this location by foot or bike, and customer parking is available on the street and within the block area. Number seven is non-applicable, preserving significant historical and architectural resources. Number eight, preserves significant natural and environmental resources. That is also non-applicable. Number nine, complies with all other applicable regulations. This standard has been met. The proposal complies with all other applicable recommendations. These are the standards. Any objections? I guess someone can make a motion if I don't have any objections.
Find the zoning number. I move that in the case of
I move that in the case of two-one-ZMJV dash zero-zero-nine-one-five-one-eight Davis Street that we recommend approval to the city council, um, per the information included in the packet and the conditions as indicated by DAPR.
Are we listing the conditions?
I think we do.
Okay.
Okay.
Bear with me.
I'll help you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm reading them from the, from the rec, from the packet. Number one, locate the cashier at the front of the store. Number two, tobacco sales are not to exceed fifty percent of the total sales. Number three, the storefront window obstruction is restricted to a height of three feet above the floor. Number four, all deliveries are to be done at the rear. Number five, a refuse receptacle is to be placed near the cashier and is to be accessible to the customers. And number six, litter in the front of the store is cleaned up by the store owner. These are the ones out of DAPR. Are there any other, uh, conditions we'd like to place?
Um, I think we want to, uh, add the hours of operation in there. I don't see it there, but usually include hours for the special use. So I think what we've heard testimony tonight is store hours of nine AM to nine PM, I believe.
Is that right? Yes.
The question is, sorry, Katie?
It was, uh, nine AM to nine PM daily.
And, uh, so my question is generally we sort of, uh, consider what are the operation of hours of adjacent and nearby businesses, I think, to set in terms of the condition? So, uh, what do we have, um, as to hours for nearby businesses? What's, I guess, what staff's recommendation here?
Generally, in that area, it would be six AM to, um, eleven PM or midnight during the week and then weekends, either midnight or one AM.
Okay, let's set that as part of our conditions then. You want to do that, Lisa?
I guess friendly amendment to add, uh, hours of operations to, uh, what, um, Members Orden has presented. So hours of operation not to extend beyond, uh, six AM to midnight.
Thank you. Okay.
Did you also want any condition about, um, the applicant working with staff and the Public Works Agency to determine appropriate signage relating to parking?
We had talked about that not really being appropriate for a condition because it was the job of the city.
It, it is the city's responsibility to determine what exactly would be needed, but it can be a condition of the special use and, and that way have the applicant, um, pay for any signage that might be needed.
Okay, you want to add that?
The zoning board did do that in the past with the, um, immediate care facility at Chicago and Main.
Did.
Okay, so, uh, an additional condition that the applicant, Mr. Ali, work with city staff and Public Works to determine any, you know, any changes that may need to be made in order to ensure smooth traffic flow in the area uh, with the addition of this use, um, and, uh, in, in pay for any signage as directed, uh, related to the storefront used by city staff.
Thank you. Okay, is there a second to this?
Second.
Thank you. Katie, call the roll.
Eric Cullen.
In favor.
Member Miranchev?
Yes.
Members Orden?
Yes.
Member Pucktel is absent. Uh, Member Deacon?
Hi.
And Member Aravalo is absent. Uh, the motion carries four O.
Thank you so much, Mr. Ali. By unanimous decision, you have passed. Thank you so much. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Don't have, we don't have any more, uh, new business. That's right, Katie?
Correct. So we can adjourn this meeting if you would like. And, um, I guess we'll, we can move into our following meeting, the Joint Plan Commission and Zoning Board of Appeals meeting for training, if you would like, after you guys motioned to adjourn.
Okay.
Before we motion to adjourn, can we have a, uh, a thank you to members that are not moving on to the land use commission, who this is their last meeting?
Thank you to all the members who are not moving on. It has been a long one, you guys, but we've done it. We've done it. We brought this to its natural conclusion.
Thank you, everyone, very much.
And this is the last public hearing of the Evanston Zoning Board of Appeals. Effective January first, twenty twenty-two, all matters considered by the Zoning Board of Appeals will be under jurisdiction of the Evanston Land Use Commission in accordance with ordinance ninety-two oh twenty-one. The first meeting of the Evanston Land Use Commission will be held on Wednesday, January twelfth, twenty twenty-two at seven PM via the virtual meeting platform Zoom. Login information will be provided on the agenda posted in advance of the meeting. Can we get a motion to adjourn?
I'll move to adjourn.
Second.
Can we just do a joint? Or do you have to call the roll?
You can just call, we always just do I on the adjournments. Go.
I.
So I'm going to stop recording now and then I'll restart the recording, um, once we have the other members, uh, participating.
Okay, good night, everybody. Enjoy your holiday.